And we're back.
Hey.
We are back and we're live, so no time lost.
Okay, so we're just waiting on Terry and Camila, it looks like.
And I just texted Marnie. I'll let you know if I hear back from her, Katie.
Okay, that's great. Well, as always, we'll be relaxed about when things happen. Camila is entering now. While we're waiting for Terry, Natalia, was that public comment non-agendized or pertaining to a specific item?
It was non-agendized.
Okay, great. Then we'll do it right at the jump.
Katie, Marnie isn't able to attend, so I'll just say something quick at the beginning of my report.
Sounds good. There he is. All right. Everybody's got audio? We're all good?
Yeah, everyone, everybody went down the rabbit hole there. I couldn't kind of...
All right, then I will call us to order at 5:08 PM for this special meeting in September. Thank you guys so much for being a little flexible on the schedule this month. Let's start with our roll call. Trustee Andrews.
Here.
Trustee Capel.
Here.
Trustee Khan.
Here.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Here.
Fantastic. All right, guys. So first up, we need to go ahead and adapt the agenda. Before we do that, any reordering, omissions, additions, changes, anything we need to bump around? No? Okay. Then I'll ask for a motion to go ahead and approve the agenda as it appears in your board pocket.
I mean, we approved the agenda.
Okay, do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing them, we'll go ahead and proceed to a roll call vote as always on Zoom. So, trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Capel.
Hi.
Trustee Khan. Trustee Wilkerson. Perfect. All right, guys. So here we go. We do have, Natalia tells me, somebody on the phone who would like to make a public comment on a non-agendized item, so we would love to hear from them now.
All right. Go ahead now?
Yes.
Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Kim Canny and I'm a resident and property owner in Altadena. I wanted to express...
Uh-oh.
I've had difficulty finding information on any projected cost scenarios to Altadena taxpayers. The measure allows a maximum of 10 cents per square foot of property annually, rising to 17 cents by the end of 30 years due to the annual allowed rate increase. But how will the actual cost to taxpayers each year be determined? While it has been stated that the library will not collect this tax for operating costs until Measure A sunsets in 2025, it is not clear that any language in Measure B would prevent that. Is proposed that the tax would be used both to repay bonds for construction and for ongoing services? Does this mean that in 2026, when the tax starts being partially used for operating services, that the repayment of the bond will slow down and therefore effectively cost the taxpayers more than if it was paid off quickly? Is there any information on the projected cost scenarios available to the public? If so, where? And if not, why not? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Natalia, do we have any other public comments at this time?
We do not.
Okay. Then at this point, we'll move on to our consent calendar. That's item three on your agenda. So as usual, I'd like to ask for a motion to go ahead and approve the consent calendar in a second, and then we can pull out any items for discussion that we'd like to touch on.
So moved that we accept the consent calendar?
Okay, perfect. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. At this point, I'd like to pause for any discussion or commentary on anything in the consent calendar anybody would like to discuss. Any discussion? Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to go ahead and flag just a couple of things from a few of the departmental reports that I wanted to highlight quickly. One of those is the diversity audit that's happening in Children's and Family Services. Really appreciated some of the details and statistics on that. I thought it was really interesting to see through how the collection stacks up, and I'm sure, you know, we'll hear a little bit more in our 1,000 books before kindergarten presentation, but I really, it was neat to see some of those, some of those figures come out. The other piece I wanted to highlight was the, and I know we'll get to this a little bit in Nikki's report, but the survey on curbside pickup and some of the responses that we, that we saw from both Bob Lucas and me, and it was really gratifying to see so many people coming back with such high satisfaction rates on that. So thank you so much to everybody who's making that happen. Any other comments on anything in the consent calendar? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and proceed to a vote. The motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Oh, go ahead, Betsy, sorry. You're muted.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself and I couldn't. I did want to say one quick thing.
Please.
From the technical services report, I was so gratified to see that the California State Library databases are available through public libraries too. I didn't know that. This is something that I was using in my school library for the last couple of years, and it's phenomenal because it saves each individual library all the subscription fees for, for the databases for kids to be able to use for, I mean, for anybody to be able to use, but the ones that they're, the ones that the California State Library is providing is primarily for K through 12. And I guess just one suggestion I would submit to maybe explore, and that is whether Britannica and ProQuest, the two vendors who are providing those through the light, through the state library, might make tutorial videos available that we could put on our own YouTube channel. I know they produce, they produce tutorials all the time. I just don't know, you know, how it would be possible or if it would be possible to fold those into our YouTube channel since that's becoming such a locus for people to get services from us. So that, that's just one suggestion that I have about that, but otherwise, I'm just so thrilled that that's available. And especially, I know that library services in PUSD can be kind of spotty. So even though those are available through PUSD schools, I'm not sure kids are finding out about that. So it's great that they can find out about it through us.
I have a quick comment to...
Please.
I forgot to mention this. I didn't know what a zine was until I saw Carlene's report. And I went online to figure that out, and there's a whole new world out there that I found for zines. So I think that's a nice step in the right direction for our holdings. So thanks for that.
All right.
Can I respond to Betsy real quick?
Please, yeah, of course.
Well, that's a great idea in terms of tutorials. So we'll look into that to get those on our YouTube channel and potentially share with local schools. And I am excited to share, and I'm sure this will be in the tech services report next month, that California State Library bought Job Now and Veteran Now or Vet Now through Brainfuse as well. So those are going to be coming through the California State Library in the next few weeks also. So for those job hunting and looking for job skills and things like that.
That's great to hear. And I should have mentioned, as I was leaving my, you know, getting ready to retire from my job last spring, and as COVID was happening and as the state budget was all in disarray and lots of questions about it, 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 there was a spell of time there when, when we didn't think these databases were going to be refunded. And I, and my own district also was, you know, in fiscal doom and gloom. And so it just looked like a resource that we had worked really, really hard to make kids kind of dependent on was suddenly going to disappear. So the fact that they're, you know, that they're funding even more databases for public libraries is just really, really good news.
Agreed. Thank you, Betsy.
Okay, any other comments or observations on anything in the consent calendar? Okay. Motion hasn't been made and seconded. Let's go ahead and proceed to a vote to adopt the consent calendar. So by roll call, trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Capel.
Hi.
Trustee Khan.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Hi.
And I vote I as well, so that's approved. Perfect. So now we come to one of the most fun parts, as always, of our agenda, which is our special presentation. So today, we are hearing about 1,000 books before kindergarten from Children's and Family. So, Elaine, take it away.
Wow, how are you all? Natalia or Chloe, can I share my screen, please?
You should be able to now.
Thank you. Okay. All right, let me move things around. So, we're providing an update on Youth and Family Services for you all. You'll notice that it's not children's, it's youth. We petitioned Nicole to let us change our department name because Isabel, our teen librarian, is now part of our department. So we changed that to youth to better encompass everyone that we're serving. All right. So we're talking about 1,000 books before kindergarten, a little update on what children's is doing, and then some information about our programming engagement team. So 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, it's a program that's run in libraries throughout the US. It was started by Bremen Public Library in Indiana in 2005, and it's based around the summer reading module of encouraging participation in reading with rewards. So families are challenged to read 1,000 books together before their child enters kindergarten, which sounds like a lot, but within five years, or even if you start the year before, it goes really quick. So basically, the point of participating and doing these programs is to build a strong early literacy foundation. So providing caregivers and children the opportunity and the reasons to build a practice of regularly reading together, to help build a community of readers in the library, to encourage regular visits, to encourage print motivation. That's one of our six necessary early literacy skills for being ready to learn how to read. So getting kids excited about reading and enjoying reading. And then I'm getting them ready for kindergarten, as the title is, 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. Children who are read to regularly, they're going to be better prepared when they start reading themselves. So they're going to know how a book works. They're going to be excited about reading. They're going to have a larger vocabulary of words, have listened to the different sounds in our words. So they're just going to be more prepared when they start those steps towards reading by themselves. So at Altadena, we launched in 2019, so before I came on. And tracking can be done online using our Beanstack application. It's also software online. We use it for our summer reading programs as well, or it can be done on paper. At Sign Up Parents, get a blue folder with tracking logs, a guidebook, and some other resources about early literacy, things going on in the library, different programs. And then they start reading and they track what books they read. They don't have to write down titles. It has a location for the date, if they want to write the date that they wrote the book, and they just check off each book as they go. So at 100 books read, they receive a big orange tote bag to carry all their books in. At 500 books read, they receive a copy of the book Maria Had a Little Mama. And then at 1,000 books read, they receive a completion certificate, and they get to select one of our new books to place a book plate in. In the inside cover, it says, "This book celebrates whoever was reading, who read 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, along with the date completed." And we also put a note in our catalog and Koha so that if for any reason we need to replace that book, we can also replace the book plate. And then for each 100 books read between those bigger rewards, children will receive a small sheet of stickers. So all books count towards this program, including books that we read during storytime, books that are read multiple times, and books that are read during summer reading programs. So anytime that a book is read, we can count it towards, whoa, 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. Yes, okay. Went all over the place. There we go. Okay, so how it relates to Growing Together Pasadena is that when we came on to Growing Together Pasadena, we shared resources and information with Pasadena Public Library and Sierra Madre Public Library just to talk about what programs we had in place already for early literacy development. And they were excited or in the process of starting their own 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten programs. So we are planning on using funds provided through the Growing Together Pasadena grant to purchase items for two, two different types of kits that we will give out at all three library districts at the same time. We'll have a Born to Read kit, which is for little guys, zero to two years, and then a Ready to Read kit, which will be for ages three to five, more preschool, ready to go to kindergarten, ready to read. So the ones that we give out at Altadena will include our registration items for 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. So I'll have that blue packet with all the information, information about how to sign up on Beanstack, how to contact us, and how to start logging their books. So we were planning on doing this giveaway and push for 1,000 books in, hopefully in September, no, September, October. But because it, all the items are being paid through Growing Together Pasadena, which funnels through the Pasadena Public Library. They're still working on getting their purchase orders open, so we had to push that back a little bit. And so, so we are going to be distributing those at the beginning later. So like a new, new practice to start in the new year, getting ready for reading in kindergarten. So in those packets, the Born to Read packet for the zero to two-years-old kids will have a tote with the Growing Together Pasadena logo. And it's a pretty high-quality tote and zip. It's got pockets. You could put like a bottle of water, a bottle of milk in there. One to two books, a pullback soft cartoy, a play scarf, an egg shaker with the Growing Together Pasadena logo, and then flyers and information from other Growing Together Pasadena partners like Young and Healthy, Kidspace, Chat Care, things like that, as well as information about early literacy and the registration packet for our 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program. Their Ready to Read kit will include the tote again, one to two books that are more appropriate for the slightly older age group, as well as preschool-level workbook or workbook pages. So just some ideas to get parents thinking about ways that they can work with their children to get ready for kindergarten, especially since so many kids are at home right now with parents who may or may not know some activities to do with those kids to get them ready for kindergarten. So just giving them some ideas. We'll also include a primary pencil, which is one of the bigger pencils, pencil sharpener, glue stick, eraser, pencil pouch, scissors, crayons, and then those flyers and information on partners and early literacy, and our 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten registration packet. So that is our 1,000 books. I'm going to move on to Children's Services update unless any of you have specific 1,000 books questions.
Okay.
I do, actually. I'm just wondering how you're going about finding all the kids. I mean, you know.
Finding the children?
Yeah. What, what's the promotional plan?
So the promotional plan will be, well, you're going to be cross-promoting because it's through all three libraries. And then promoting through our partners in Growing Together Pasadena. And then through our, see, a lot of the partners in Pasadena is, one of them is Pacific Clinic's Early Head Starts. So we will market through them, but also probably try and provide kits to them, bring kits to them, as well as our social media and different regular standard ways of marketing that we usually use. I'm hoping that because something like our, our summer reading pockets had such big turnout that we will get similar-ish response to this guy. But we will also do some targeted information sharing and marketing to preschools and childcare facilities in the area.
Is there any, any thought to how to get to newborns? Can, I mean, can you hook into the hospitals, or is there any way to identify families who just brought home babies?
Um, the best... We, I'm sure that Pasadena will, will look at like Huntington and the hospitals in their area. We also have access to Pasadena Public Services, and they have some parenting groups. So they have groups for pregnant, BIPOC moms, and some other early maturity and parenting groups. So we'll probably market through them as well.
Great. Yeah, I think that's probably the hardest, the hardest demographic to find.
Yeah, it's a little tricky. There are a couple of parenting groups in Altadena that we'll also try.
Isn't there, isn't there a WIC office in Pasadena?
There is. Yes, yeah.
That would be another idea.
There's a WIC office as well, yeah. Thanks, Betsy. Okay, so Children's Services. I am just talking about the Children's Services side of youth services because Isabel, I'm sure at some point, will talk about you, her teen services. So our programs that we currently have going on, we have our live storytimes with bilingual storytime and a baby toddler storytime. The way those are working is people can register online for our programs and actually participate on Zoom. If they do that, they can come by and pick up a little storytime kit that includes our scarves and our eggshakers so that they can really participate along with us. We also are either, depending on how the technology works, live streaming at the same time that we do those storytimes or putting them up directly after we finish the storytime onto YouTube so that other people who are not registered can also participate. And that seems to be working well. We actually had one storytime where we only had one live participant, but then got like 43 views the next, by the next day. So it is working that way somewhere. We also have some pre-recorded programs, like Diana is doing some PJ storytimes and has recorded some book talks. We have a Homework Helpers program that's going on. There, we have not so far had anybody sign up to participate in Homework Helpers, but we do have a volunteer who shows up every week, and we have a staff member who's in there every week. So hopefully, we'll get somebody soon to participate. Amanda's finishing her Panel to Page program, which she was doing before we closed for the pandemic. So she's just finishing out that planned program, and the kids are working on creating their final graphic novels that they're putting together. We have different trivia programs that go on every month. And then Claire from the Friends group has started leading and putting together a program for East Coast Science with the scientists. And with that, she and some of her colleagues get to just present, they're focusing on comparing Earth to other planets. So planetary, I don't know what the word is, comparisons. So they're looking at things like, I think last time they did wind and atmosphere. So they're comparing wind and atmosphere at, in Earth to, on other planets, as well as how those things are actually studied and measured and found. So we're talking scientists who actively work on projects for observing those, those aspects of other planets, come in and talk, and Claire gives a little introduction on what that part of science is. So we've had two of those so far, and I've heard really good feedback, so we're excited about that. And then we will start our Yum Yum Challenge soon, which is our take on sort of adaption of our Nom Nom Club, which our teens do. But with the Yum Yum Challenge, we're going to focus on targeting the tween age group, so ages 10 to 12. And we will provide them some, some basic and easy ingredients that they can take home and see how they can transform them into hopefully something edible. And then they'll get together on Zoom and show what they have created. And then there's, it'll happen monthly, so the first week, they'll show what they've created, and then the next week, they can come back on and just kind of discuss what their favorite foods are, how people reacted to what they've done, anything else that they've created, things like that. In terms of, I sort of mentioned it, in terms of participation in our programs, it has been lower than even the summer. And what I'm guessing and what it seems like from people that I've talked to is that people are just kind of zoomed out with going to school on Zoom and working on Zoom and just doing so many things in front of the computer. It's a little challenging to also sign up for something else to participate on the computer. We are trying to plan more programs where you do kind of pick up some supplies and at least have a more hands-on experience. But along with that is either a recording that would be on the computer or a live program. So we're working on it, but we're still providing the best programs we can think of. So we're working on it, but we're still providing the best programs we can think of. We've, since we've been closed, I've been working, me and the team have been working really hard on kind of cleaning up and working on the children's collection materials. So I shifted the layout around. There were some aspects of our collection that were just kind of a little confusing to people. So I did things like pulling out our beginning chapter books from our juvenile fiction so that they're all together. So that kids and parents who are looking for those early chapter books that are not quite all the way to regular chapter books, but a little bit harder than those beginning readers that we have will more easily be able to find those items. We put world languages and Spanish language materials, as well as parenting materials in a more obvious place in the children's, the children's room. And just shifted a couple of other things around. And I'm going to put all of the picture books into one location in the room so that they're not spread out throughout the area. We're also working on a super deep weave of the entire collection. So our team is going item by item, opening each item, seeing the condition of it, looking at when it was last checked out, how popular it is. And we are removing items that have not been checked out in a long time or are in very bad condition. And then I'm going back through and filling kind of some holes that are missing. Especially in our nonfiction, there's a couple of holes that we need to fill in terms of different topics, as well as replacing some items that are very popular and can be replaced and adding new items. And then we are also working on a diversity audit, which I talked about a little bit in my board report. So we so far have only done the audit itself on our beginning readers collection, but we have just about finished our reading in every other collection. So we're about to start auditing the rest of the collection. So it's providing us with data on the types and amount of diversity present in the collection. And then purchasing new items, I mentioned that. And we're also creating some items for the Library of Things. So we put together a collection of some of our, our instruments for younger kids that aren't being used at this time. And we're adding in like a world music CD and a rhythm stick CD. And we're putting that together as a kit to check out from the Library of Things. Helen Kate is just made some super cute spoons. Let me see if I can, you know, it'll be glaring. She made, she painted some really cute wooden spoons, which we can use like puppets. So we're going to check out those spoons along with the book that they go with as a kit so that kids can kind of recreate the story after they read it. So we're working on those things. In terms of the diversity audit, I can show you what those questions are a little more in depth. So first we do, is there a diversity of any kind evident? And then we look at the types of racial and cultural representation. So in terms of the ones that are diverse, racial or culturally, culturally, these are the numbers. So this guy is black. Our next biggest one is multiple groups represented, diverse but unable to identify, and then Asian, including Middle Eastern in the US. And next question is, is this a non-voices title? And this is only for those diverse books. Majority are no. Some of them are yes, and some of them are unable to determine. As we're looking at this, I do want to remind you that this is our Beginning Reader Collection, which are the books that have very simple sentences, a lot of blank space on the page. They often have really popular like characters from media, a lot of animals. There's not a lot of, there's starting to be more people as the protagonists, but a lot of them have like animals or different characters as protagonists. So I think when we do the audit on our picture books, we will see more diversity on that. So and then after every diversity question, we just have this as a stopgap so that if people have finished documenting, when we go through documenting all forms of diversity, they don't have to go through the rest of the form. So then Indigenous Native American representation, Asian representation, and this is just breaking out the ones that have Asian representation. So only 32 items. And then where the familiar geographic location is. Listen from Pakistan and Taiwan. One from Egypt. And then this is Latinx representation, mostly unable to identify. Then Puerto Rico and Mexico are our highest. LGBTQAI plus none in our Beginning Readers Collection. Family structures that are evident, some same checks, more interracial parents, some intergenerational, some adoption and foster care. Characters with disabilities, one with sight, one with hearing, and one with one loss. Narrow neurological challenges, none. And cultural and religion, eight that are Muslim. And then other forms of diversity that are not in the previously mentioned. It's like we have 17 that address gender roles or gender bias. Nine that just associate, cannot like diversity or poverty. Some with refugees and immigrants. One homeless or without stable accommodation and one with incarceration of a character. So that is our diversity audit. And it's currently on a Google form. Actually, I've switched it to a Microsoft form because that just works a little better. It's a little friendlier with Excel. So we're using that as the tool to do a diversity audit and then it will build us a spreadsheet, a database of each of the items in our catalog. So we've done some trainings recently. We've all completed the raising the bar, integrating the early childhood education into library and professional development. And that is a training that was created by New York Public Library. We also, through Growing Together Pasadena, just finished two Unleashing the Power of Storytime sessions. And then while we were closed because of the smoke, a lot of us watched the Magic Triangle of Reading Aloud, The Book of the Child and the Adult, as well as Receptive to Race: Normalizing the Discussion of Race with Children in Libraries. So the programming engagement team, I recently, in the past few months, took on leadership of this team. So we've come up with a new regular schedule for our programming, some regular guidelines and procedures. So hopefully, unless we see big issues with this calendar, this will be our calendar going forward. So summer reading will last the months of June and July. We'll have a programming break through all of August. A fall programming session, September through the second week of November. Then a programming break from the third week of November to the new year. And then our longest programming session is our winter-spring programming session, which is the first week of January through April, and then a programming break in May to get ready for summer reading. And each of those programming breaks are in there to allow us to kind of recuperate from the last programming session, to plan for the next one going forward and take some vacations and breaks if necessary. The Pet Team came up with some programming expectations. These are still a little flexible, but they're goals. So in terms of for the different age group, for children, adults, and teens, we have what the staffing is available for each of those age groups, as well as the types and number of programs that we would like to see from each of those age groups. So outside facilitators or partner programs each month. Staff-led special programs, weekly programs, pre-recorded programs, which could be the regular weekly programs, outreach programs. And then programs with materials or pickup per year. Those are things like our summer reading program, the Read Adina and like Diana's Civic Engagement Program that will be starting in October. So Bob Lucas is sort of support and planning help for all three of those age groups as well. We also created a program proposal form. This is for new programs that are not currently ongoing so that we can kind of better streamline the planning process for programming as well as make sure that all of the departments in the library are aware of programmings that are being, programs that are being developed. And hopefully so that we can kind of coordinate programming between all of these age groups and sort of present a more unified front for programming. So we're looking at things like the summary outline, marketing description, supplies needed, as well as the programming category. We don't have specific numbers that we want to hit for each programming category, but we do want to spread them out among different categories throughout the year. And what values, what Pasadena Library values does a program align with and how so? And then what strategic priorities does it align with us and how so? What new skills and experiences will participants gain from the program? And then what library resources or materials will we highlight in that program? So we have some next steps through kind of presenting the program and then getting our documentation or evaluation and statistics. Working, we're going to be working with Victor. He just joined us for everything, but he's joining the Pet Team. And he has some good ideas for a more formal evaluation process in terms of the staff side and the programmer. So thinking about how the program went. And kind of what they learned from the program and what could be kind of changed or adjusted going forward. And that is the end. So thank you all for listening to me. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Emile, for that
Yeah.
sense of presentation. I would love to open it up to any questions or comments or feedback or thoughts from the board. I really like the wooden spoons. That's so sweet. That's like the best.
Sorry, that was super long. I gave you a lot of information.
No, you know what? We are fully briefed and you guys have been doing a lot. So it sounds like there's a lot to talk about, which is, which is never a bad thing.
Yeah.
Betsy, it looked like you had a comment.
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions. One, I'm so impressed with that audit and I'm wondering if you guys created that or did it come from ALA or where did that come from?
I created it. It came from, there was librarian, there are various librarians who are doing things that are similar. So I did adapt it from various tools, but yeah, I put it, I put it all together.
Wow, that is really impressive. Nice job. And then I have one other question about what you were talking about, about the collection and the reading and the reorganizing. And you had mentioned world languages. And I wondered what, what languages are represented in the children's collection? And, and what are needed that aren't? I know it's, it's hard to find that stuff, but I'm just, I'm presuming we probably have quite a bit of Spanish, but I'm wondering what else.
Yeah. So the bulk of our world language collection is our Spanish language collection. And then, but we also have items that are in French, Mandarin, and sorry, it's not coming to me. A couple in some other languages, but French and Mandarin are mainly the other two that we have. And those are the two that I've heard feedback from are requested from parents in the community. But we are definitely always open and eager to adding different and diversifying our collection.
Interesting. Just one last point, because it kind of went by fast and I had to, I had to remind myself about the category of own voices. That's kind of a, that's kind of jargon in our field.
Yeah.
Just for people to know, you know, it just means books written, books written by members of the group that the book is about. So
Yes.
you know, a book about Latinx kids that's written by a Latinx author, et cetera. Just a little clarification.
Yes. Thank you.
Sure.
Awesome. Camila, please, go ahead.
I also wanted to thank you for the, the great diversity audit. I was really glad to see such a concentrated and concrete, like very purposeful effort. So I just wanted to thank you all for that, especially you. I hear that you, you know, spearheaded and created the process. I was also curious about, I'm super excited about the 1,000 Books Before Kinder. I've never heard of such a thing, but it's really exciting. And am I correct in understanding from your presentation that that starts in January and you'll be passing out the kits and, and things like that for people to participate in that?
So it's an ongoing program. So people can sign up now. It just, it's ongoing till forever. But the, the kits will be passed out in January. So even if people have already signed up for the program, they can also get, grab one of those kits.
So selfishly, how, what do you do for people who like, are you prorating? Like people who have, like I saw that you had like different categories for zero to two and then, you know, so if I have a four-year-old, you know, how do you, how do people jump in on that at different age, age levels before Kinder?
Um, we should, well, you can sign up anytime before Kinder. So you can sign up now. And it is up to you. We're not, we're not judging or keeping track of what everybody does. So if you want to start at like 500 and say, hey, we've definitely read at least 500 books up to this point, let's do 500 more before we hit kindergarten. We can definitely do that.
Yeah, I think that would be interesting to, just because there'll be some people that are, you know, in the same boat. Not only the people that are just having the little people, but you know, might want to still participate in the, in the reading challenge at different, you know, be, you know, they're before Kinder, but they may be three or, you know, or four. So that would be, that would be great. Okay.
Yeah. And, and you can always count books that are like read during school, read throughout the day, books that you read multiple times.
Yeah.
So it goes pretty quickly when you start doing it.
Yeah. It's really, it's a fun and really cool idea. So thank you for that.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions or comments for Emile?
I just had one more.
Yeah, of course.
And it's really just how great it is to be a library district instead of a municipal library. I had to kind of chuckle when I hear that Pasadena Public Library is still waiting on their purchase orders. We don't have to do that. I mean, you know, we have our purchasing processes, I'm sure, but to be so kind of lean and fast really comes in handy sometimes.
Yeah, for sure.
You're here. Camila, did you have, yeah, go ahead, please.
Yeah, one more quick question, something that I, I circled in my, in my paper that I was curious about. So I saw that you, again, the, the really focused effort, you said that you, in the audit, you're looking at books that where diversity is not always represented in the subject heading or the title. So what are, I mean, I imagine you all have such a huge amount to go through. So how are you doing that? Are you, are people going through each and every book to look for diversity in those books? If you're not getting it just from the titles and subject?
Yes. Yeah, for our books that have illustrations in them or graphics, we are flipping through each book and putting that through there, especially for things like nonfiction and picture books. It may have some illustrated forms of diversity that are not mentioned in the subject heading.
Really nice work.
Thank you.
Awesome. And a huge undertaking.
Yes.
Huge. So. Huge. So congratulations.
Definitely.
All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you so much, Meiling, for coming and updating us. And thank you to your entire team and the New Youth and Family Services for all of their amazing work.
Thank you, Mylan. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will go into our reports. We've got our support group reports and I believe we have Bridget with us. There she is from the foundation.
Hi.
Hi, Bridget. What's happening?
Well, a lot, actually. One of the things we have learned that is that our work takes on new meaning when we plan an event, support a ballot measure and focus on internal organization. While we balance family and professional demands during a pandemic, fires and an earthquake. So we're all just kind of patiently waiting for the coming of the locusts. So our primary news this month really is about Taste of Dina. It was, Saturday night was a light at the end of a very long tunnel for us. We began organizing in April with an absolute total commitment to helping our local businesses, especially those who have participated in Taste of Dina in the past. So it's really hard to express the win-win that we experienced as we offered to purchase some gift certificates rather than asking local places to give us something else one more year. And businesses were truly appreciative of our willingness to actually purchase a gift certificate rather than expecting them. And truly, it was just unparalleled community event that demonstrated what neighboring and connecting and curiosity really can do when we apply those goals to all of our work. So for some stats, more than 80 bottles of wine were pulled and every single 100% of the silent auction items were purchased. And as of this moment, we have made about $14,000. And that will help us purchase the library van. I'm sorry, I just saw, I'm just seeing the chat notes start my video. Sorry, I just figured you didn't really have to see me here. We're really excited about moving forward in purchasing a mobile van and it really mobilized a lot of people. And the fact that we made the $14,000 in a year where we didn't sell a single ticket, we didn't ask for sponsorships, I think says a lot about our community's willingness to support our library. And as vital as the monetary income is, it's the community goodwill that has really been of greatest value to all of us, particularly as we work toward passing Measure Z. Our committee was comprised of Foundation Directors Leslie Dink, who really led the team, Claudia Kitty Bustamante and Nora Hampton, as well as community volunteer and library patron, Wida Luhon. And then, of course, the incredibly talented staff of Chloe Cavalli and Michaela Revolo. And of course, others worked a lot of hours making all of this possible. But we simply couldn't have done it without Chloe and Michaela really taking the lead on this rather than us trying to do everything and then I mean, the, just the idea of a virtual event, we were all like, what, what, how do you do that? And Chloe showed us how you do that. And I think she did it very well. So it was a very, it was a wonderful success that we're really happy about. And then in addition to to that, we've just been sort of putting Measure Z is always on our minds, but we haven't been able to focus on it totally. So in addition to, you know, giving the $80,000, several of our members have also pledged to give personally from their finances. And then I think now they're ready to really focus on it. And I had a couple of calls just recently about how can I get my yard sign? And they're really excited when they, Lola particularly had a great story in sharing that she was embarrassed that she saw a lawn sign in her neighbor's yard before there was one in her yard. So she took a picture of it and sent it out to all the board members and said, I have my sign. Do you have yours? So I'm, I'm just feeling pretty hopeful that we can get behind this now and raise the the last few dollars that we need to raise to make Measure Z happen for us. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much, Bridget, and a huge congratulations to the entire Taste of Dina team. That's an amazing result.
I think so too. My goal was, I thought if we could get like five to 7,000 this year, that would be, you know, we could hold our heads up. So 14.
Blew that goal away.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
I'm thrilled. Thank you.
That's great.
And thank you all for your support as well.
Yeah, Bridget, I think that move of buying the gift certificates was brilliant because those businesses are going to be talking about that for years to come.
I hope so.
Yeah, I know. That's really a great way to kind of reverse engineer the whole thing. So congratulations on that.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. It was not my idea alone.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you so much, Bridget. All right. So I think Nikki, you're going to update us a little bit on the Friends and then move into your Director's Report.
The Friends, Marnie is unable to make it tonight. She apologizes for not being able to report. The only thing she asked me to share on behalf of the Friends is that their next Friends of the Altadena Library Board Meeting is this coming Saturday, October the 3rd at 12:00 PM. If people are interested in attending, they can visit the Friends website and get the Zoom link to attend. So that's the Friends report. So moving on into my report, good evening trustees. I hope everyone continues to stay safe and healthy in these very crazy times. First off, I'd like to introduce our fantastic new Assistant Director. I'm going to let him introduce himself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Victor Hjurby. And that is a Swedish last name that I don't expect you to be able to pronounce anytime soon. Took my wife quite a while to do that. So you can just call me Victor and I'd just like to share that I'm so excited to be here. This is day seven in the job and I already know what you already know in terms of this team being so inspired and creative and efficient that I'm, it's a real honor to be here. I've been following Altadena for a little while, ever since Nikki joined you. I worked with her in Glendale for some time. And yeah, everything that I found in my research has proven to be true. This is a fantastic library and a fantastic city. So I'm happy to be here. And I'm open to any questions that you might have, but you have a little bit of my bio in the, in the, in the agenda already. So.
Well, let us be the first to, on behalf of the entire board, formally welcome you. We're so excited to have you with us. And I mean, it's, it's very clear from what we see in the packet and what Nikki has said that you are going to be a fantastic addition to this district, to this community, and we're just so thrilled to have you here. So welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Welcome, Victor.
Thank you. And I look forward to meeting you all in person as well, whenever we can do those kinds of things. It'll be great.
Can I just ask, Victor, I want to be able to say your name even if I say it wrong. So what do Americans say? Sjöberg? Schoberg?
The version that I like to tell people, even though it's not correct, I say, I just say Schoberg is fine.
Okay. And then would you say it correctly one more time?
Hjurby.
Hjurby. You know, my, my, my late sister-in-law lived in Gothenburg for
Oh, really?
35 years.
Wow.
And I, I don't, my husband speaks Swedish, I don't, but I do know how to say Heydo. So that's it for me.
That's a good one. Hey and Heydo, that's a good start.
Thank you for that. I was just Googling the name so I could see it phonetically pronounced.
Oh, yeah.
I could also pronounce it correctly.
I appreciate any effort in that direction, but don't feel bad.
All right. All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we're very, very excited to have Victor start and we threw him in basically headfirst into the pool. His second day with us, we actually held the final round of adult services librarian interviews where this is going to be his direct report, which was why we waited to do the final round so he could be part of that process. And I'm very excited to announce that we offered the Adult Services Librarian position to Margaret Hottenaka and she has accepted. She's going to be starting with us on Monday, October 12th, which is actually our next professional development day. So she'll have a full day to really submerge herself and get to know staff. We're excited about that. She comes to us from a really strong background in libraries. She's been a librarian for 20 years. She also has been doing a lot of research on Altadena and is really excited about joining an innovative and creative staff. Strong background in collection development, some supervisory. So I think she's going to be an ideal right-hand person to Victor as he oversees not only adult services, but also all public services for the system. So there'll be more in my package next month that will give you some more information about her. We're also sad to announce the retirement of Sue Colaserto, who I'm sure those of you that visited the library regularly are very familiar with. Her official last day with us is this coming Thursday, October 1st. I will also provide more information in my next board report and there wasn't time to get it in this time around. But we do wish her well and I'm hoping at some point, we have, we also had Debbie Geringer retire since we closed, that at some point, we're going to be able to do something in person with them to celebrate their retirements. But that, that news came this month as well. And with that vacancy, in an effort to expand the librarian level, which was recommended when we went through the classification and compensation study, I'm excited to announce that we're going to be posting a Youth and Family Services Librarian position this coming week. Nicole and I are working with Meiling to create that job description. So that will be posted and we're going to, you know, get it out far and wide to get as many quality, high candidates as we can. We had a lot of really great people apply for the adult services position. So I'm confident that that will be the case with this recruitment as well. So again, we just continue to carry forth the recommendations from the class and comp study and hiring really amazing people. So I'm very excited for our future moving forward. I did want to just give a heads up that we will be having a professional development day on Monday, October the 12th. That was actually built into the calendar last year. So we're just going to maintain that. It's also known as Columbus Day, also known as Indigenous Peoples' Day. A lot of times people don't expect government buildings to be open. So we're just going to continue with that. So there will be no curbside or phone service that day. We had the staff read the book, The Five Languages of Workplace Appreciation, and then take an assessment to figure out what their appreciation or how they receive appreciation. So we'll be doing activities around that as well as other training related to our internal value statement and how to navigate crucial or difficult conversations. All of these were suggestions that came out of our last professional development day that staff were very happy with. So I'm really excited to keep this forward movement of bonding teamwork and really getting to know each other well to enhance the work that we do together as a team. So I'm happy to transition the adult services team to Victor and appreciate their flexibility, patience and work as we fill the position. As you know, I've been wearing several hats and they have been very patient with me as we've been, you know, we've, I've met with them on a weekly basis, but they really carried the work forward even without like a lot of leadership at times. So I'm really grateful to them. We're also almost done with the remodeling of the upstairs staff areas. These are areas that weren't necessarily built into the ARG reports. These are things that wouldn't necessarily be part of the remodeling project. So we, we worked on not only my office, but the Administrative Services Office next door. We redid the Assistant Director's Office and it was ready in time for Victor to start last week and moved Passport Services downstairs in anticipation of them opening and being able to have an external entrance. The last thing that we're completing right now is the Adult Services Team space, which should be done by the second week of October. A huge thanks to Jonathan and his staff for the demolition, arranging of flooring and painting and furniture building and everything else you can think of. And I'm excited to get you guys back in the building so you can see some of the changes we've made. And it's really been like a nice, fresh start for everybody. I know the staff are grateful to be like housed in the same staffing areas as the people that they're in the same departments with, which wasn't the case before this happened. So again, Jonathan and his staff have done an exceptional job as well as Christopher, like Christopher had to relocate all of the staff, like desks out into the main floor right now and did so in one afternoon while the fires were happening actually. So everybody came back and had a place to sit until the remodel's done. So thank you to him for all his work as well. I did want to point out that our last video with the Pasadena Literary Alliance has been posted on our YouTube page. I would definitely encourage all of you to check it out. I've heard, I haven't had time to watch it yet either, but it's the best one yet. It's three female authors being interviewed. So check it out. We're going to continue to pursue that partnership, possibly doing another video series next year. I know they've been extremely grateful to Chloe for the many, many, many hours of editing that she's done to put those nine videos out on our YouTube page with, you know, many, many views. So check those out if you haven't seen them. Just to really briefly touch on Taste of Dina, I want to thank the foundation so much for another amazing Taste of Dina fundraiser this year. Although it's sad that we weren't able to do it in person, it was a huge success and we are that much closer to our goal of a third library building on wheels. And in agreement with Bridget, thank you so much to Chloe and Michaela. Like honestly, these events would not happen for their tireless effort. And it was really kind of fun to go through the silent auction. My husband was very busy bidding all night. So that was pretty fun. If you haven't seen the video, you can watch it. It's on our YouTube page as well. A nice video with Bridget and I and several of the other staff and actually a story of one of Diana's literacy students with her tutor. So if you didn't see it, you should watch it. It was really touching. Okay. So a reminder that the vote by mail ballots will be sent out on October 5th to all California voters. We were informed that they've done away with the former boxes and process. They've separated the county into service areas and have chosen locations to place external boxes that are supposed to last at least five years. The location of the boxes were chosen by LA County and to be placed in a radius of every 15,000 voters. The boxes are to be opened from October 5th through November 3rd. Unfortunately, we were not selected as a site, which we were not happy about and we lobbied to get one put here. Natalia has asked them to reconsider our location as a place for a permanent box. As of right now, I don't see that happening this year. But it is something that we will continue to pursue and I think we'll be able to back it up with information about the number of people that come to us and can't turn in voting our ballots this year. So just to let all of you know, the closest drop-off boxes to the, the community will be at the Jackie Robinson Center, Washington Park to the west or La Cañada to the east. We checked the website today. The current drop-off spots are not listed yet, but they're required to have them up at least 30 days out from election. So it should be any day now. I just thought you guys would all want to be aware of that.
Those are 15,000 radius. That's for sure.
Yeah. So again, we'll see how it goes, but we'll lobby to try to get one up here because I think it would make sense to have one right next to the, the book drops over here on Mariposa. Okay, so let's see. I am so excited to announce that we will be expanding public access to both library buildings next Tuesday, October 6th. So yes, we will be opening our doors and letting the public back in. Curbside will continue at both branches and we will open just the community room at main for limited browsing and computer access. Those hours will be Tuesday through Saturday, 12 noon to 5:00. And at the Bob Lucas Branch, open for browsing and computer usage, 3:00 to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Patrons are encouraged to check out our website for more information at altadinalibrary.org. Patrons are encouraged to check out our website for more information at altadinalibrary.org/phaseopening or altadinallibrary.org/curbside for more details. Again, like we, we, based on the demand of curbside as well as needing to have three to four people in the community room at all times, we're not having curbside and open hours go at the same time because of staffing issues. So we'll have curbside as well as open hours, but not running in tandem. Patrons will have to agree to safety protocols that we put together and got approved by BB and K last week to enter. And if they don't want to agree to these terms, then they can, we'll refer them to curbside to keep getting their materials and services through that. I know our staff is really excited to finally start seeing our patrons again. And I just wanted to thank the board for your support and flexibility as we've worked through these really unpredictable times, not knowing quite when we would get here. But Katie and I have kept in consistent communication about when it would make sense. And it does look like we're probably going to be one of the first, which isn't too surprising based on the trends we've seen since we came back as staff to the building. But again, we're going to do this in a limited way so that staff feel safe, patrons feel safe, and then we're doing the responsible thing. So I'll continue to update you guys on how that goes. Thank you to our Bob Lucas Branch Manager Diana for coming up with and compiling the almost one hundred responses to our curbside survey. Patrons were given a paper survey as they used curbside or to fill it out online if they chose to do so. As you all saw from reviewing my report, overall patrons rated their experience as excellent, which I again have heard over and over again since we launched curbside on May 20th, only two days after bringing staff back in the building. We also enjoyed the ideas to expand our library of things, which I'm happy to share that our Celestron telescope is now available for checkout. If you know anyone that would be interested in checking out a telescope, you can refer them to us. Next up, we're going to start checking out sewing machines. I know Michaela and Christopher are working on the paperwork to get those going out, so we're just going to continue to expand. Overall, we were pleased to see that we're meeting the needs of our community through curbside and will continue the service for the foreseeable future in addition to in-person services, as I mentioned. So thank you again to all of you for your support as we have worked through the pandemic and our phased responses to expanding our offerings. I'm happy to answer any questions and sorry this went a little long. It was a long report this month.
Lot going on. Um, yeah, let's open the floor up to any questions from anybody for Nikki.
Don't have a question, a comment. It's really, really nice to see that we've got a, you know, a live library again, even with limited hours. And I'm wondering if the library's open, if we as a board might be thinking about meeting in person again there? Or are you still working that out?
It's, it's a good question. I'll, I'll work with Katie on whether or not we think that makes sense. And starting out, we're not going to be open to the public on Mondays. We're planning on Monday being the day that we're like preparing for the week and making sure everything's set up and ready to go. So it's, there's potential there depending if the board members are ready to come back in, I would say.
Well, and I'll, I'll just say, Terry, like one of the, one of the tough things about that is that if we meet in person, it actually kind of makes our ability to be open and transparent and accessible less because we'd have to figure out a way to like stream that live. Because people, we couldn't have like, you know, open public meetings where people would come and hang out, right? So it's not like we could have, we could have meetings that were open to the public in the way that we, we did before. So in, I mean, my, my feeling is that until we're able to meet in a standard, like, public setting, the most accessible option that allows people to participate most easily and safely is, is pretty much what we're doing.
Okay. No, I understand. I haven't even met Camila yet, though, so.
I know.
To do that, at least, so.
At some point, we'll get there. Yeah, we'll get there.
I had a quick question. Nikki, it wasn't clear in your description of what the phased opening would look like, whether it's just people in the community room on computers or if this, or if the stacks will be open for people to come and pick books.
That's a excellent question. Um, so what the guidelines we've set up, we're going to have three tall gondolas. So basically six sides of shelving that people will be able to browse through. And again, with a limited capacity of people that we're letting into the building. And then as of right now, we have three public computers on the other side of the community room. We've set it up with like clear pathways that are first come, first served computers. So we're just going to kind of gauge how the demand looks, if we need more computers or, but as of right now, based on capacity, we'll have up to fifteen people in that room at a time.
And so the stuff on the gondolas there is kind of popular, high, high-traffic items?
Yeah, and holds. So people will be able to pick up holds through curbside still. They could browse and pick up their holds through the room.
Okay, thank you.
Camila, please.
Hi. Um, I had a question about the voting boxes. So I mean, I'm not sure if there's been any communication about them right now, but what's the plan to communicate to, to people, like where they can take their ballots? Because I know just personally in my circle, there's a lot of concern about being able to take, you know, drop their ballot somewhere. And so like, I'm actually working with a group on, we're allowed, according to the research that I have to, for people to pick up ballots and then drop them, like mass pick up people's ballots and drop them somewhere. But I'm just curious about the outreach to people, like here is where you can go and take your ballots. To, you know, to those, for example, the three places that you mentioned that are closest for us.
So as I mentioned, the link isn't active yet in terms of like here, click here for the list of where you can drop your ballot off. Once it's live, um, our next e-blast that goes out through Altadena Connections as well as our e-connect, I would assume we'll include that as information. We could potentially try to put something up on our website, too. But yeah, it's, it's through LA County is where they would have to go to access the information. And those are, those are specific drop boxes, you know, where they're going to go and periodically pick them up, not mail, you know. So definitely a difference there because we have heard some people say that they don't necessarily want to drop in the mail.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll do our best to get that information out. Unfortunately, right now, it's not live yet.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was happy to see that because I was, when I was doing some research, I thought, okay, I'm going to have to drive mine to the LA County, you know, the recorder's office. But I was happy to see like, no, there's going to be local places that people can take them. But I just want to make sure that there's a way that we can, you know, even I can share that information widely so that people are aware of their options. Cool. Thank you.
I'm definitely planning on including it in my presentation to town council this month, too, because I have a feeling a lot of people don't know.
Yep, I agree. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Any other questions for Nikki? Comments, observations?
I had another comment.
Please, yeah, no.
I was, um, just, it was a compliment. Again, I was, I really liked the way that you all promote a, a healthy work environment for your staff. So I just wanted to compliment you all on that and some of the, like reading the book together and doing kind of a, you know, love languages assessment in terms of, you know, receiving appreciation. And I just really appreciate places that make, again, a, a proactive effort in, in creating healthy workspaces. So thank you for that.
Happy to do it and it's a staff that's really motivated to have a very cohesive and healthy work environment.
And I'd just like to pass along my appreciation to everybody on the staff who's worked so hard on coming up with a really smart and safe reopening plan that has a lot of tiers built into it so that we have the capacity to ratchet up, ratchet back, and be, be just really responsive to what we're seeing in terms of public health scenarios. I think it's, it's really difficult, right, to thread the needle between providing services and being open and, and meeting the public, which is what we all want to do, and still being mindful of all the, of public safety and, and health precautions that we need to take. So I just really congratulate the staff on such a smart plan. And I think, you know, we've got a really good roadmap for whatever the next couple months throw at us, whatever the next year looks like. We have scenarios that will work in any of those situations and that is really, really good to know.
Also, I would comment, I picked up a book last week from the curbside and it was awesome. I actually really liked it. I had a sleeping toddler in the car, too. So it was very, very convenient to pull up and get my library book delivered to me. So thank you.
I'll share that.
Okay. If there's nothing else for Nikki, then let's go ahead and move on to our financial reports. Thank you so much, Nikki. And so Nicole, I'll hand it over to you for finance.
Hi, can everybody hear me? Great, okay. And so I'm at my first financial report, page twenty-one of the package. And for the sake of expedience, I'll just go through this quickly. And so these are the financial statements for July or eight point three-three percent of our new fiscal year. Revenue highlight in, we did receive a reimbursement from CLA, five hundred dollars for a program that we hosted with Mitch Horowitz as part of CLA's Mental Health Initiative. And it's by far been one of our most popular virtual programs. It's at almost four thousand views, I think, on YouTube last I checked. And then for expenditure highlights, we did pay some property liability and workers' comp insurance premiums. That was the, the bulk of spending for July. Those payments went to SDRMA. And then we did receive a very generous donation from the Friends of the Library. We received twenty-eight thousand dollars, which was over the twenty-five they had initially thought, so we were really appreciative of that. Does anybody have any questions about the financial reports for the month of July?
Betsy.
Not so much a question, Nicole, but maybe a request. It was so helpful just now when you said that this report reflects eight point three, was it? Percent of our, of our budget. If, could you just put that percentage in the cover report every month? Because, you know, that's one, that's one way, that's one filter to look at these reports as, as sort of what percentage got spent and what percentage we've gone through. So that, if that could just be a little addition to your cover, that would be fantastic.
Yes, of course. You had asked me about that a couple of months ago, so I have been including it in the report.
I totally forgot.
I have a little note, too.
I just, I just have the same good idea over and over.
You do.
Great. All right. Any other questions for Nicole? Comments? All right, that was easy. Thank you, Nicole. Appreciate it.
Oh, I have a quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, it's about the budget committee. I mean, we've got space for the report, but there is none. When, again, are we talking about reconvening the budget committee? Is that going to be about mid-year, mid-year to our fiscal year, Nicole?
Um, yeah, traditionally, well, we, we would have had a meeting to kind of go over the preliminary audit results, which I, I don't have just yet. They are wrapping that up and it will be ready to present at the October board meeting. And so there is the potential to meet next month if you wanted to go over the preliminary audit report before it is presented to the board. We could do that, definitely.
Okay. Well, Katie and I are on that committee, so could you let us know when that, uh, when that occurs? What a good, a good window might be for that?
Yeah, absolutely. As soon as I have the, the preliminary report, I'll let you guys know.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Good, good reminder. All right, and I think that's the perfect segue to bring us into some of our committee reports. So Terry, no budget committee report, correct? Okay.
No, there's no budget committee meeting, no report.
Okay, um, so moving right along, CVRA, uh, no report presently, although we do now have access to a webinar from CSDA about sort of what's happening with the California Voting Rights Act and some updates on various other municipalities and, and what's going on. So I am supposed to watch that and I will definitely do it soon. It just came out like a week or two ago, so that's on the radar. And it was, uh, it was from a live presentation that was, I think, two or three weeks ago. So that's sort of the, the latest and greatest on CVRA. Of course, as you guys all know, census data collection is wrapping up at the end of this month tomorrow. So that will be that and hopefully our response rates, you know, are, are high enough to give us a semi-accurate count as we move into our redistricting process next year. District Director Evaluation Committee, Betsy.
Uh, on page thirty-four, um, of the packet is an, kind of an addendum to the form that we approved last month, at which Nikki drafted. So maybe Nikki, maybe it's better for you to sort of go through your rationale. It's pretty, pretty simple.
Sure, yeah, no problem. So, um, we did not include in the annual director's performance evaluation the goals from the previous year. So, I mean, because that form is going to be long enough by the time all of you add your comments and sign it and all the scoring and ratings. So I've created this form that would summarize all of the goals that were assigned to the director or myself at either that six-month mark or the last eval, annual evaluation, which would then allow the director a follow-up and commentary about those goals. And then as you scroll down on it, it also would have, I would think the director would put suggested goals. And then when the board and the director meet in closed session, they would add more, change, edit, et cetera. And then this form would then be transferred over into the next year's goals, just to help inform as you write and fill out the director's evaluation. And if there's things that are missing, let me know. I can always continue to edit it.
I like this a lot. It's like an executive summary. It's really, it's a very helpful way to just encapsulate briefly what the big picture action items are. So I think this is a great addition.
And Nikki, could you remind us once again when your, when your, uh, when your, when your mark is out? Is that in January?
It's the day after we're lucky.
Pardon me?
It's November, Terry.
November, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, no, that's. So just to, just to, um, finish off this part of the, of the agenda, my intention is to check in with BB and K to just, you know, get a timeline set. I'll have it ready for the October meeting so that between October and November, there'll be a very clear timeline of, um, each of us filling out this report separately, getting it to them by a certain deadline, them rolling it all up and getting it, um, you know, set so that we can have it available for a, a closed session meeting in November to get it, to get it completed on time. And I, I guess I want to thank Nikki for being resilient, being evaluated so many times this first year. After this, I think, I think we're, we're going to have a much easier and less frequent schedule of evaluations.
No, I, I appreciate the direction and making sure we're on the same page.
Well, it's, it's all about communicating and I think we're, we're all devoted to that. So that's, that's been a big improvement, I think.
Perfect. Okay, uh, Public Funding Committee. So the one thing that I'll say on this is we have had some informational requests for basically modeling. I think, you know, that was sort of the, the thrust of the public comment we had earlier this evening as well of like, how does sort of the process of Measure Z work out? And what I will say is that, you know, having gone back to, um, both NBS and Columbia Capital for sort of multiple rounds of this, the, the thing to take away is that this is a much more sophisticated public revenue measure than either a per parcel tax or a general obligation bond because it kind of wraps together elements of both of those. So we have just in the last week or so gotten back some projections from NBS and modeling. So hopefully for anybody who's had questions about that, we can go ahead and, and share that information with them and get them, you know, as, as much in detail as they would like. We did, we did request that and it's just become available. So that's, that's the major update there. Again, a reminder that everything campaign everything campaign-related is totally separate and in no way the province of the Altadena Library District. So I won't say anything else about that. That brings us to our liaison reports. So any, any liaison reports from our friends, foundational government liaisons?
From the foundation perspective, I think Bridget pretty much covered it all. Just, again, a huge thank you to the community. It was great being able to watch the YouTube video live. So if you missed it, you know, please go and check it out on YouTube. It's, it's only 20 minutes. And I think Katie, you mentioned, I mentioned it earlier, but you know, the peace of being able to hear the kind of back and forth in the interview from one of our, our tutors and, and the woman that he's working with in the community is really great. And everything about Saturday was, was amazing. So thank you again to everybody that helped make it happen.
Here, here.
Yeah, and I, I don't have anything for the, the Friends other than that we're going to have our meeting on Saturday. And it seems like we just had the last meeting. Jason was at that one as well. But really nothing to report until I hear from them on Saturday.
Okay. Go ahead, Betsy.
I've got, just, I'm going to try to make it very brief. Last meeting, Katie delegated to me looking into an election for, this is kind of obscure, so bear with me. Our, our LAFCO representative alternate. Okay, so I'm just going to give you the super quick reminder of what LAFCO even is. We, because I had to go look it up. We, we've had a presenter come and talk to us about LAFCO. It's just one of those ways in which we are enmeshed and met.
Oh, no.
Local government at a very granular commission, represent LA County, cities, cities in LA County besides LA proper. Special districts, that's us. The San Fernando Valley gets its own representative, not quite sure why that is. And then, well, like, why not the San Gabriel Valley? I don't know. And then one member representing the general public. So in, in the part of the group that represents the independent, independent special districts, there are two members and one alternate. And the one alternate is what we needed to tell them who we wanted them to vote for on our behalf. So I looked at the various candidates. There were four of them. And I concluded by compare, I mean, I compared all their experience and all of their, their professional job experience and their special district experience and so on. Just so you know, I asked Natalia to direct our vote to be cast for Dan Medina, who has been a trustee of the LA County, County of Bedford Control District for about four years. The main reason I chose him is that he's been a city council member for 16 years in Gardena. And I just feel like that cross experience of being both, having both special district experience as well as, you know, municipal elected leadership experience is probably going to be very valuable. He is bilingual in Spanish and English, bicultural as a Mexican-American. His professional training is in accounting, which I think is going to be very valuable. And he's got a lot of experiences, as, as all of them really did, in, in different community organizations. He just seemed like the most well-rounded person with the, with the widest breadth of experience. So you don't ever need to think about this again, but Dan Medina is our alternate representative on LAFCO, so.
Thank you so much, Betsy.
You're welcome.
That's amazing.
You know, it, it was, I'd say it was a little bit interesting.
A little bit, a little bit, yeah. No, I think it's great. And I, I, you know, we've said this before, but there were a great many years when we didn't participate, didn't know what LAFCO was, didn't do anything. But I think being a little bit more engaged is, is a good direction to be moving in. So thank you so much for your diligence on that. All right, trustee reports. Does anybody have any reports that they'd like to make?
I'll just, I probably should just kick this in under your report, but just to remind folks, Katie, too, that you know, we have a pretty in-depth FAQ page on Measure Z. It's right on the very front page of the Altadena Library website. So folks, I would also encourage folks, if you have questions, you know, keep tabs on that. I'm sure it'll be updated as, as we approach.
Yep, absolutely. And to always reach out to Nikki if there's an informational question of any, of any description. As a public agency, we are here to answer all of those informational questions at any time best we can.
I, I'm sorry, I'm talking a lot, but I do have, I do have another.
Literally why we're here.
Literal, little thing I want to say. I, I mentioned in passing that I volunteered to do some research on Boyd Georgie, the architect of our building, of our main library building, in order to write an article for Altadena Heritage Newsletter, which I've completed. I'm hoping, I don't know for sure. I'm hoping it'll come out before the election. That was kind of the idea, but anyways, I'm, I'm not in charge of the publication schedule, but I got to interview so many interesting people, including Carl Georgie, Boyd Georgie's son. Who was a ninth grader at Elliott Junior High when the library was being built. So it was very interesting to talk to him. I talked with Bill Tama, who was the library director, although it wasn't called the library director in those days. It was called the head librarian. He was the director before Barbara Pearson. So I've had a lot of really interesting conversations and I, and I'll just point you to the article when it gets published. But I did want to tell you about one very poignant conversation I had and a seed that I'm going to plant tonight, because this probably won't grow until after. I'm not on the board anymore. And that is during the, during the seventies and eighties, there was a, there was a trustee, one of our, you know, colleagues back then, named Adolfo Morales. He's the father of Pablo Morales, who's the filmmaker who did the film about Mier High School. And he is an architect. He, what, he, he's retired now, but he spent, I can't remember, it's 15 or 20, no, I think it was 15 years, 15 years as a trustee. And he was an architect. And he didn't know Boyd Georgie, really. He met him and sort of promised him that as a representative on the board, he would, you know, watch out for the building and make sure that, make sure that everybody took care of it and stuff. But he said, you know, I haven't been inside that building in a long time. Because the last time I was there, I walked in the door and I looked at the staircase that goes from the community room up to the main level of the library. And I saw the handrail that they put on that staircase. And I said, it's all wrong. It doesn't belong in this building. It's not the right. I talked to, I don't know who we talked to, but he talked to somebody and and whoever he talked to didn't seem to care that, that the, that the handrail was just completely wrong for the building. And he said, he said, it hurt me so much. I've never walked through the doors again. So I don't know, honest, I know nothing about architecture. Everything I know, I learned by writing this article. I have no idea if there is a handrail of any kind that would be appropriate for a mid-century modern building. I would just ask that at some point along the way, when y'all are working with architects, after we get this bond measure passed, that somebody take a look at that handrail and think about whether it needs to be replaced. And if it does get replaced, let's invite Adolfo Morales to come back into the building. And maybe we can call it the Adolfo Morales handrail or something. But I just feel like some, and by the way, another thing you need to know about him is that he's the reason why the Bob Lucas branch is named the Bob Lucas branch. It, it was called the Branch Library, I think, before that. And he made it his business to have that branch named for Bob Lucas. And and so, you know, he's somebody who did contribute a lot in his time. And the least we can do is take a second look at that handrail. So that's what I wanted you to know.
You got a little bit there. And was the, was the handrail inappropriate because it was a wrong style or that it was mounted incorrectly?
Yes. No, it's the wrong style. It's the, you know, and the, and the thing that, that Carl Georgie talked a lot about, about his dad and about mid-century modern architecture as a style is that it's all about the details. And, you know, another amazing thing I'll just tell you in passing is that out of all the clients Boyd Georgie had in his entire architectural career, he told his son Carl numerous times that the Altadena Library Board of Trustees and Gladys Babcock, who was the director at that time, were the best clients he ever had.
Oh, wow.
And there was such a level of trust between that director and her board that they gave her the, the role of being the client. And so Gladys Babcock and Boyd Georgie worked together so closely on every detail of that building. And, and so, you know, I, as, as Carl said, even people who know nothing about architecture, like me, you know, you walk into a building and, and it affects you. You know, I think we all know what that feels like when we walk into the main, you know, onto the main floor of the library and the windows and the, I didn't know what they were called before, but they're called Clara story windows, those ones that Jonathan told us got, got, got repaired lately, that kind of make the whole roof look like it's floating. I mean, and, and everybody knows about the sunken, you know, the sunken reading court. I mean, there's just so many things that make it iconic. I mean, it's, it's an iconic building. And, you know, I almost wish I didn't know about the handrail now, because now when I go in, I'm going to think, dang, that's just, that's not, not correct. But yeah, and I'm sure, I mean, I'm sure somebody put it in with the best of intentions to help people from falling down when they walk up the stairs. You know, it may very well be that mid-century, I mean, there's a notable architect in my husband's family who, whose house I've been to. And, and I was there with my own kids when they were toddlers. And I thought, oh my God, this is such a disaster for childproofing. I mean, they're, you know, mid-century modern wasn't always about safety first, you know, at least not, not on the surface of it. It was, it was about grand, grandeur and views and glass and, you know, so I don't, I don't know what would be an appropriate handrail, but I just thought that was such an amazing blast from the past kind of story about our building. So file that away, y'all, who are going to be working on building remodeling.
Thank you so much. I'm really looking forward to reading your article when it comes out.
It was, it was super interesting to do. And it's just made me feel like maybe after I retire from the board, I'll become the library historian, because, because I talked to several people who told me, you know, there are lots of scrapbooks and there are lots of binders. If somebody told me in the past that what I would want to do is read through old board minutes, I would have thought they were nuts. But now I kind of do, because I kind of want to know. I want to know. I want to know more. So anyway.
Awesome.
That's, that's my trustee report.
Thank you so, so much. Any other trustee reports? I'm, I'm just going to say super quickly, two things. One, kind of similarly, Betsy, I think there's, there's probably a, a natural overlap here. The Hidden Histories Initiative is continuing. I'm really happy to report that it has been totally embraced by staff. I am happy to become like largely irrelevant, because the, the great news is, is that there's such a high level of engagement from the programming side, from our partners at Altadena Historical, from Town Council, that I, I feel just so optimistic about the future direction of that whole program. So stay tuned. There's a lot more exciting to come. I think lots of really, really good ideas floating around about what that might look like, some potential grant funding. So some really exciting developments on that front. And then I wanted to, you know, bring back an old favorite, and that is just a little Brown Act time, a little Brown Act refresher. You guys probably saw that Natalia forwarded around that article from BB&amp;K about AB 992, which is basically, it's sort of a codification of some thinking on social media and best practice as regards to the Brown Act that was recently enacted. And I wanted to just flag it for your attention really quickly. Nikki and I did take the opportunity to sit down with a representative from BB&amp;K just to get some, some clarity around best practices. And pretty much, I think the long and the short of it is everything we've been doing, keep doing. And basically that just means anything that looks, feels, or sounds like a discussion among really any board members on any social media platform is, is like to be avoided. So what AB 992 changes is that that means not just substantive discussion, where if Jason posts something and I reply to it, that's a problem, but even just liking that comment or posting some sort of reaction to it counts as a form of discussion. So after a lot of back and forth, what we more or less came down on was like, as weird as it seems, the best, the best option is to just not interact with other board members' posts or comments on social media or online. It's just a way of keeping us out of trouble. And that's just one of those weird things where the Brown Act and sort of modern technology are, are really at odds. And there's a lot of gray area, but the sort of, the consensus from council is that that's just the, that's the safest way for nobody to get in trouble, for no Brown Act violations to occur. So you know, you are welcome within your First Amendment rights to say anything you want to say on the internet. God knows that's what the internet's for. But just don't get involved with anything any other board member says. So you can read the whole article. I definitely recommend reading it, but that's, that's sort of the takeaway. Don't stop liking my posts, basically, is what this trustee report is about. No, it's just, it's a, it's a weird thing, but I think that's probably our, our best practice is to just steer clear of any social media interaction among trustees. And that way, there's no issue. Okay. If there are no other board reports or trustee reports, excuse me, that brings us into our new business. So we have a couple of informational items, but we have one action item. So we'll hit that first. That is the attendance policy, which appears on pages 35 to 38 of your packet. There is a little summary staff report about why we are looking at it. But Nikki, do you want to give us just a quick briefing on the attendance policy?
Yep.
Thank you.
Of course. So I'm, I, as part of my goals actually with my evaluation is going through and updating the personnel policies. We currently have depending on what, the way you look at it, two to three employee handbook slash personnel policies that we're working off of, mainly 2008 and 2015. Well, as we went through them, we didn't really have an established attendance policy, which yes, is a bit mind-blowing. So Nicole and I did research mainly on CSDA's website, other special districts. We looked at Palos Verdes and other places just to develop this part of the policy so that we have something on the books. We didn't know exactly when we would finish the personnel policies, even though we worked on them last Friday and we're getting close. So I could see us bringing them back by the end of the year. But in the meantime, we wanted to have an established attendance policy. And just so you're all aware, our plan with all policies that we bring to the board moving forward, we'll first go through our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Team. So that we're looking at it from the lens of making sure all of our policies fall under those, you know, concepts and guidelines. Once they approved it and, and gave us feedback, which we did incorporate, we sent it to BB&amp;K, who also reviewed this policy and sent it to all of the staff for their feedback and review as well. So before it came to you guys, we've had the staff look at it and EDI and BB&amp;K. And incorporated any legal compliance issues and feedback from staff. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the specific policy. It's our recommendation that you vote to approve it unless you see substantive change that you'd like us to include, in which case we bring it back.
Okay. Let's open up the floor. Any questions, revisions, suggestions?
I, I think it all looks reasonable to me. I'm glad to see, I mean, it's, I think it's a pretty important workplace issue to have clarity on so that everybody knows what the expectations are.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty solid too, and it's very well-written as well. So. Yeah, I thought it was pretty solid too, and it's very well vetted as well. So that's good.
Yeah, no, no changes for me. I think it makes sense. I think it looks good. You know, I also feel pretty confident that if it turns out for some reason that there's some adjustment that needs to be made, um, that, that we'll see it again. So I think it's a great starting place to at least have some policy in place and then see, see how we go from there.
I had one question.
Please.
It's a super minor question. I'm actually glad to hear that you, it was vetted be, be by the staff. So obviously it's not an issue for them. But, um, my question was around the the early departures and the tardiness. So both of those qualify as a half of an occurrence for the purpose of discipline. And so the, then you have eight occurrences of an unscheduled absence. So then does that follow that tardiness and early departures are under the category of an unscheduled absence?
Yes.
Okay.
Where I see them adding into the number more is, um, I think if you read up above, it's, uh, you can have up to two in a month. So that would be a half. So the way I could see tardiness, like you're not going to track months and months worth of tardiness, but if you have someone that is vitually coming in late or making last minute schedule adjustments, then it would probably in a monthly or couple of months really become apparent. So, I mean, the main thing that we want to do with this is make sure that we're counseling and coaching on attendance. Um, up until now, we had no established policy. So it's kind of been the wild west, to be honest with you. And unfortunately, that's led to some kind of excessive attendance issues with certain staff. So it's my goal to get this established and then sit down with some of the people that I think need more counseling and get them on the right path to make sure that we're being consistent in staffing the buildings as necessary, especially as we're about to open.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense. I was just looking for, initially when I read it, I wanted to know like, well, how are they going to discipline the tardiness? And then I see that it is kind of qualified within the, you know, unscheduled absence. So that was just my own wanting to make sure that that was clear. But again, since the staff have read it and have no questions, I think it's pretty clear.
Yeah, and this, this definitely is not with the intention to be punitive, but more so to be proactive.
Right, very good. Well, then, uh, we will have an opportunity for further discussion after we get a motion, but let's go ahead and get a motion to, uh, approve and adopt the attendance policy as it appears in our packet.
I move that we approve and adopt that, that, uh, attendance policy.
Okay, do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion, debate, conversation on this? Okay, hearing them, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Kapal.
Hi.
Trustee Khan.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Hi.
And that's an I vote for me. So that is unanimously approved. Thank you so much. All right, um, we've got a couple of informational items. Um, so no action required on any of these, but let's just, uh, take them in order. So first we've got, um, some information on health premiums. Is this, uh, Nicole, are you going to talk to us about this?
Yeah, I definitely can. Um, I'll just go over it quickly. So, um, this is just a review of the monthly premiums for contracting agencies with CalPERS in the LA area and they're effective January first of next year. Um, and we always put this out every year during the September meeting because we have open enrollment, which started September twenty-first and it goes through October sixteenth. And this is the time when staff have the opportunity to either change their health plan or add or remove dependents, things like that. And this year there are two health plans that fall below the district contribution of five hundred dollars to employee, per employee. Um, and we do have actually several staff who select one of those plans. So, um, it does result in a, a small savings for us, which is nice. As you can see in the attached little chart there, unfortunately, every single plan did see an increase from this year to next year. Some of them were quite substantial. Um, and then there is an attached rate sheet for each plan, um, monthly. And then if they have any dependents or anything like that. And we did actually start a new service this year. It's an online portal called Ease where the staff can actually log in and see what plan they're currently enrolled in and all the options for them to, to either add or remove dependents or change plans. And it actually shows them a breakdown of their monthly contribution per pay period, which is really nice. That was a new thing for us that our benefit partners did for us. Um, so that's really exciting. It's made it really streamlined, really easy. And, um, yeah, that's all I have about that. Any questions about premiums or open enrollment?
That's cool. I like that online portal option. That seems like a super useful tool. Okay, great. Thank you so much, Nicole. Next we have, uh, some information and this is at, uh, Terry, your request last month that we talk a little bit about, uh, projecting some costs both in terms of our, uh, election costs for Measure Z in our twenty twenty election, as well as thinking ahead a little bit about, um, potential board elections in the following cycle. So Natalia, I know you did most of the, the research on this. Do you want to just talk through these results quickly?
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks.
So, um, essentially, like you said, um, at the request of trustee Andrews, um, I compiled a report to compare the twenty eighteen general election cost to the election, um, upcoming election. And, um, as you can see, the cost, I broke it out from twenty eighteen and twenty twenty. So, um, the twenty eighteen cost came out to eight eighty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and nine cents. Um, and I broke out what those costs were attributed to, which is election preparation, election operation, vote by mail processing, candidate nomination filing and campaign finance and sample ballot processing and printing, which is kind of standard. Um, and I attached an appendix, which you guys can see within the packet. Um, and then the estimated cost for this year took a leap, which is a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, seven hundred and eighty-three and sixty-seven cents, um, with the same breakout. Um, essentially election operations, vote by mail processing measures. That was a mistype there. I think I put it twice, sorry. Um, and voting information and candidate filing, campaign finance and election preparation costs, which can be found in Appendix B. Um, I also provided a chart, uh, where I illustrated the variances. So it's a comparison between, um, the years that you can see like a breakout of it, um, and the variance is thirty-one thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. And the bulk of the change of the cost is attributed to election operation. Um, I spoke with a person at the Los Angeles County, she's actually a supervisor, but at the Los Angeles County Election Billing Unit. Um, and she explained to me, I, I kind of asked her, um, what the increase was because it is a substantial increase. Um, and she said, the changes included, um, the extension of early voting day. So in the past, it was, um, I think a day before you can vote and now it's four days before. Um, and then it's changed periodically due to COVID. They have new systems and then technicians to, uh, run those systems. They have an increase in printing costs because in California, um, everyone's getting a vote by mail ballot. So there's that. Um, and then uh, that goes into the vote by mail portion, um, the multilingual materials, it increased from four languages to twelve, uh, which is mostly printing costs. And you can see that, um, at the top in the chart. Uh, and then contracts and costs related to those permanent voting by mail boxes. And then increase in voting center locations, um, and staffing for those voting centers. So a lot of the costs came with that election operation and the vote by mail processing, as you can see at the top. Um, and these are all estimates, so they're subject to change. So we won't know until the end or when we get an invoice what the total cost will be. But, um, if the cost stays the same, uh, it will impact us forty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. So that's kind of like the gist of it and I'm open to taking the questions.
Uh, Natalia, this is Terry. Thanks a lot for compiling that. That's an excellent job and answered a lot of my questions. And it, it sounds to me from this analysis that all the costs are just getting higher and being passed through to the folks that are, that have measures of candidates on the ballot. So, uh, I, I guess it's a cautionary tale to us that things in the election, county election fees are probably going to continue to increase in the coming years. But I was really struck by, uh, how expensive the whole process is. And that was one reason I wanted to have you do this so that we could take a look at. So thank you very much.
No problem. And I think, um, one thing that might help is, um, when you guys go into your budget committee for the next cycle around or in the future, um, they do have this estimator online. So it may be a tool that can be used to kind of estimate for that next, um, election cycle.
Oh, that's great. Thanks for that information.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you so much for, for putting all this together, Natalia. It's really helpful. And I, I think, you know, my big takeaway was as we're thinking, especially moving forward about our, you know, by district elections, um, it doesn't look like there's going to be any fiscal impact to doing elections that way. It's just that the process of holding elections is going to get more expensive and that would be true whether we were doing it at large or by district. I don't think that, that makes any difference because when you print something in twelve languages, it's expensive regardless.
Can I just ask real, a quick question? Cause, um, since, uh, since we don't actually have to hold elections for the vacancies, that will, that should in turn save us some money, right? Because that's less stuff that they have to print and mail. Or does that not affect?
It, I would say it doesn't affect as much. I think it's like a few thousand dollars less because you're still paying for the pages for like the measure information and things like that. So, um, when I did it, um, I used the calculator and you put in as if we did have an election um, and all of that, and it really didn't affect it that much. It was maybe a few thousand dollars just for, um, things specific to, um, candidates. So like some of their portions or some of the, the verbiage that goes with, um, a candidate. So it wasn't that much more, but, um, or that much less, I guess, to answer your question. It's more so the printing.
Thank you so much, Natalia. Any other questions on this? Um, I think this is super helpful to have and I agree as we go into our budget process, I think this is a really good reference point to bear in mind as we project ahead. Okay, um, our last informational item is on our painting restoration. Um, very comprehensive report in your package. I don't know that we necessarily, uh, need to go through all of it, but Nikki, is there anything you'd like to pull out for us on the restoration process?
Uh, no, I just, um, we wanted to share a progress report. Um, as the report says, we're assuming that she's going to be done about mid-October with the painting. Uh, the board did request a varnish test, which she did. And based on what she did, she doesn't recommend removal of varnish, but that's all included in the report. What was really stunning to me was looking at the comparison of the before and after. And it makes me very excited to get it back because I do think cleaning it up has really enhanced the painting quite a bit. Um, it will be our plan to get it appraised again. Um, that hasn't been done in a long time. So for insurance purposes as well as uh, liability and things like that, we're planning to have an appraisal done and hopefully plan some type of event in the future celebrating the painting once we have it back and potentially finding, um, I think a place where it's more visible, uh, for people to enjoy when they visit the library. So that's, uh, in summary, what I had to share, but I'm happy to answer any questions that maybe weren't revealed or that you might have for Camilla that we can ask her, um, before the next board meeting.
Those before and after photos are crazy.
Nikki, have you seen the painting live then or just the reproductions? Okay.
All right, very good. Thank you so much for that. And please, uh, conveyor things to Camilla for such a good, um, progress report. It's really helpful to see where everything is.
Will do.
Okay, so this brings us to, uh, our correspondence. We do have a communication from, um, the registrar about our, uh, election process. And I just wanted to flag this for you guys because I think it means we need to think about our vacancy appointment process a little bit differently. Because when I read, I, I was under the impression, and I guess I must have been misinformed, that we had to let Betsy's term fully expire, like all the way to no, to December sixth or whatever, and then appoint a replacement. But what this says is that we actually need to have um, an item on a regular or special meeting where we appoint formally as a board, Terry and Camilla and any person nominated or qualified to fill such office. So that means like the third person. We need to do all of that prior to November twenty-third. So my big question is, is it on or before November twenty-third? Because November twenty-third, that Monday, is the date of our November regular meeting. So it would make sense to me that we could, you know, advertise basically ASAP and then plan to do an appointment process for that third seat at our November regular meeting. But my, I don't know if it has to happen before the twenty-third, as in like the twenty-second or earlier, or if we can do it on the twenty-third. So that was, I think it would be helpful to have a little bit more clarity on that process, um, if we could from the, from the registrar so that we get it right.
I don't understand. I'm not seeing November twenty-third as a date cited in this letter. So other than it being our meeting date, what's the significance of that date?
So on page fifty-four, it said, um,
Turn over the page.
Um, it says blah, 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 because only two people were nominate, or only two people filed. Um, the election's not going to be held. So the Board of Supervisors therefore shall therefore at a regular special meeting held prior to November twenty-third, appoint to the Office of Trustee the persons nominated and any qualified person. So that means like the Board of Supervisors does that by the twenty-third. So can we do that? Pro, we would have to have somebody ready to go to them by the twenty-third. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, it looks to me that you have to do it before the twenty-third.
That's what it looks like to me as well, which means we would need to have, um, a vacancy appointment process before our November regular meeting.
Yes.
Uh, bylaws reminder, or I don't know, legal reminder, can we do that work at a special meeting or does that?
We can, we can. No, it doesn't have to be a regular meeting. We can totally do it at a special meeting. Um, but I guess my question is, like, can we do it at our meeting on the twenty-third? Or is that not cool? So it's, it seems to me like the Board of Supervisors is planning to do that before the twenty-third. But maybe we could get some clarity on that process, Nikki, just so that we know what our timing needs to look like. If we need to call a special meeting like the week before, we can do it and just have it be, I mean, that's what we did for the last one, right? When Gwen resigned, we had a special meeting and we just did.
We appointed at the June twenty-second regular meeting.
Oh, we did? Okay.
And I'm thinking, uh, we'll do some research, but maybe we just appoint at the October meeting.
Well, yeah, except that means we would need to be publicizing today.
Yeah, that was going to be my input. Either way, we need like a pretty immediate plan on outreach.
Right. And I would, I would love to give people more time just because I think there's going to be so much noise around the election that it's going to be very difficult for us to break through, um, before November third.
Okay, let, let me, Natalia and I will work on this and we'll.
Okay. Okay. We'll figure it out. But I just, I read that letter and I went, oh, just kidding.
Lot going on in Altadena. We got.
Lot going on. All right, perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, so any, um, any proposed future agenda items that anybody would like to flag for inclusion on our October regular meeting? Which is going to be Monday, October twenty-sixth. We've got all kinds of regular stuff and I'm sure Nikki on the board in your office, you have a whole spiel of stuff that we're going to do, but anything anybody would like to see particularly?
Um, just FYI, when y'all were talking about the budget committee, I just ran to my trustee filing cabinet and found my folder called Board Calendar um, for night, uh, two thousand nineteen, uh, twenty twenty. And the only things on this calendar that we normally do in October are healthcare premiums, resolution as needed, and audit report. So it's not a packed meeting, just FYI.
Yep.
Not of regular stuff, anyway.
Yeah, well, and I'm, there's never any shortage of stuff, but as always, if you think of something, um, you can always just give me or Nikki a call and let me know and we'll get it on the agenda. So if there's nothing else, I think that brings us to the end of our time. So if I could, uh, hear a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Perfect. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any opposed? Hearing none. Uh, I will go ahead and declare us adjourned at seven fifteen PM. Fantastic. Thank you so much, everybody. Really appreciate it.
Everyone, welcome Victor.
Welcome, welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.